Afternoon, everybody. It's 12 o'clock. I think we should begin. We still have some folks coming in, so we'll just do a little bit of introductions right now, hoping that everybody joins us as we do that. Thank you for joining us for today's webinar, an overview of the 2022 Planning and Zoning Board Handbooks. My name is Alvinas Negich. I am the Assistant Planner with the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development within the Department of Business and Economic Affairs. My colleague Noah Hodges, who's also here, and he's the Principal Planner at the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development, and he will be doing most of this presentation today. We are also joined by Stephanie Verdile, who is also the Principal Planner, and she might be helping us with some questions if we encounter some that we can't answer. Next slide, please, Noah. The meeting controls are located in the ribbon located at the top of your screen as depicted on this slide. There are icons to raise your hand, to open the chat box, to react, and to change the screen view according to your preference. If you have a question during the webinar, please put it in the chat, and I will try to answer them as we keep going. We will also have a Q and A session at the end if we have some time left. Next slide, please, Noah. Over the next hour, Noah and I will present the 2022 editions of the New Hampshire OPD Planning and Zoning Board Handbooks, along with the new product titled Federal and State Planning and Zoning Case Law. We will go over the changes made to the handbooks which incorporate legislative changes signed into law in 2022. We will answer questions about the organization of the books, the process of incorporating changes, and tests that are based on those books and are available in a couple of formats. There will also be time for questions and answers, like I said. Next slide, Noah, please. So we'll start with reviewing the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development Training Mandate, which is set in the RSA 673:3-A. Any member of the zoning board of adjustment or planning board may complete training offered by the Office of Planning and Development or another organization that provides similar training covering the processes, procedures, regulations, and statutes related to the board on which the member serves. The Office of Planning and Development shall develop standard self-training materials and corresponding tests for zoning boards of adjustment and planning boards, which shall be provided to members free of charge. The Office of Planning and Development may provide other types of training, which may be designed in a variety of formats, including but not limited to web-based, distance-learning, or traditional classroom style. For purposes of this section, the term "member" includes regular and alternate members of zoning board of adjustments and planning boards. Next slide, please, Noah. There are a few training opportunities that New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development provides. We published the Planning and Zoning Board Handbooks. Now we have this new publication, which is the Planning and Zoning Case Law, which is now separate. It used to be the appendix to the zoning board book. We also hold annual conferences. Next one will be on April 29th. So please save the date. We have the webinars like today. That's our plan, Planning Lunches at Noon series. We are also looking into coming up with shorter trainings, which we will be calling a Train Series, which is Training and Information Mini Learning Modules, which also will be published on YouTube and have a little test attached to them. And we also provide floodplain webinars and training and planning and zoning board tests, which we will talk about later. Next slide, please, Noah. The Planning and Zoning Board Handbooks are now, and now the federal and state case law for New Hampshire local official publications, are published on our website and are updated each year to include the latest legislative changes and to keep all the links and other information current. The links to the publications will be provided at the end of this presentation. Unfortunately, OPD stopped printing and selling the books a couple of years ago when we moved to another location. So the only way to obtain the books now is online. Next slide, please, Noah. All the publications are organized very similarly. There's a clickable table of contents in each book, making it easier to find the necessary material within the book. Summary of changes are organized by chapter and page number, and follow the organization of each book. The summary of changes shows new and deleted language, similar to zoning amendments sometimes. Both Planning and Zoning Handbooks have their own website pages where you can download the full publication, summary of changes, or each chapter or appendix individually in a PDF format. We will have a slide with all the publications listed at the end of this presentation with the links to the publications. The case law publication is published on the general page with two other books and does not have its own webpage. And then the next slides will be presented by Noah, and he will take you through the actual changes made to each book. Go ahead, Noah.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Alvinas. And before I kind of go into the bulk of the slides, I just want to say we're going to go through a lot of kind of technical material. And so if anybody has any kind of questions, feel free to raise your hand or put a question in the chat, and I'll do my best to answer the question as we go through the material rather than having to wait until the very end. So the OPD Planning Board Handbook is organized into six chapters. Chapter 1, Organization. Chapter 2, Nonregulatory Functions, including the Master Plan and Capital Improvement Plan. Chapter 3, Regulatory Functions, including subdivision regulations, site plan review, and zoning ordinances, as well as the zoning amendment process. Chapter 4, Innovative Land Use Controls under RSA 674:21. Chapter 5, Application, Submission, and Review Procedures. And Chapter 6, Working with Other Boards and Organizations. There are also several appendices that provide various links of interest templates for different documents needed for the board to conduct its business. Adjusted Rules of Procedure, Checklists for Applications, Criteria to Determine Regional Impact, a flow chart of the application review process, and some advice on how to be a good board member. Chapters and appendices are available for downloading individually or as a whole book. And the link to the book, to both the Planning Board Handbook page and the Zoning Board Handbook page is included at the end of this presentation. And Alvinas, if you want to just also maybe put the links in the chat now, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. So the first change, as Alvinas started to allude to, can be found in the preface. First of all, let me say we're going to start with the Planning Board Handbook changes, then we'll get to the Zoning Board Handbook changes. So the first change in the Planning Board Handbook is in the preface. There's a new publication starting this year, which contains the Planning and Zoning Case Law, going back to 1952, titled Federal and State Planning and Zoning Case Law for New Hampshire Local Officials. It used to be part of the Zoning Board Handbook in an appendancy, and it's now a separate, it's now just going to be a separate standalone document that'll be updated annually. And then the next kind of set of changes are mostly legislative changes. The majority of legislative changes in 2022 were related to the enactment of House Bill 1661. You may have sat through prior webinars, either the webinar I think we did last August in partnership with NHMA. I went through a bunch of those. And so we've basically taken everything in House Bill 1661. A few other pieces of legislation are now reflected in different parts of the Planning Board Handbook, as well as the Zoning Board Handbook. So here, we've added a bullet for specific findings of fact that are now required to be in Planning Board Notice of Decision in Chapter 1. And then, and that's under Organization, under Planning Board Records. There's another legislative change in Chapter IV, the land use, the Innovative Land Use Control Statute, under the Workforce Housing Section, which says that incentives established for older persons shall be deemed applicable to workforce housing development if a municipality allows an increased density, reduced lot size, expedited approval, or other dimensional or procedural incentive under the section for the development of housing for older persons as defined and regulated pursuant to RSA 35-A:15, Roman numeral VI. VIII, it may allow the same incentives for the development of workforce housing as defined in RSA 674:58, Roman numeral 4. Municipalities that fail to make any adjustments to those incentives before July 1st, 2023, those same incentives will automatically apply to developments of workforce housing under RSA 674:58, 4. Basically, in sum, this is the change that many of you, I think, may have items going to town meeting and justice. This was, I believe, Section 3 of House Bill 1661 that basically says that any incentives for age-restricted housing are now going to apply to workforce housing. An applicant proposing workforce housing as of July 1, 2023. Again, the reason for the July 1st, 2023 establishment date is so that all communities have a chance at town meeting to make any adjustments to their existing age-restricted housing incentives if they so choose. And that change can be found on page IV, 23. Next change is in Chapter 5, under the Required Review Section, page V5. And this change has to do about application acceptance. This is one of a few non-legislative changes. We're simply clarifying that an application should not be accepted by the planning board if it does not comply with local regulations unless a variance and/or a waiver has been submitted and granted. The box at the bottom is the old language, and the box at the top in red text has a new verbiage. Okay, so moving on back to legislative changes. The next couple of changes are related to the imposing of the new additional guidance and changes related to the 65-day timeframe that planning boards have to review and act on an application as enacted in RSA 676:4, subsection C, subsection 1. And that is, this change is found in Chapter 5 of the Planning Board Handbook, under Required Review, pages V5 and V13. In particular, these sections spell out what happens when a planning board does not act on an application within the 65-day time period. So in this case, the governing board is now required to approve the application. And a way to avoid this is for the planning board and the applicant to agree to an extension. And we also note here that in 2022, the ability of the planning board to request an extension of time from the governing body for up to the additional 90 days was eliminated by this change. So now the law reads that in order for the planning board to have more than 65 days or 95 days in the case of development of regional impact or DRI to act upon the application, the applicant has to waive the statutory specified time period, and the board and the applicant must agree upon the time of the extension. And then in addition, some more details on the 65-day time period can be found later on in the same section on page V20, under the Review of Application List. This list outlines the review process timeline for a planning board. And we've noted here, changes noting that failure of the board to act on the application within the 65-day period absent agreement on an extension with the applicant results in the governing body having to approve it. In most cases, this is going to be your Board of Selectmen, city council, town council. That would be the governing body. Previously, the governing body, as I just said in the previous slide, upon the request from the applicant, could, had, could, or the planning board could request that extension. That's obviously gone away. And then finally, as detailed in Step 2, here revised Step 2 and underlined red text, if the governing body fails to certify approval, that would constitute, or I'll step back. So if the planning board doesn't act within certified 65 days, it goes to the governing body. The governing body does not certify approval. That then constitutes grounds for the Superior Court, upon petition by the applicant, to issue an order approving the application. And it is important to note here, remember that there is always an option to extend a review time period. However, again, it has to be mutually agreed upon by the board and the applicant. So before we, I know there have been some questions on kind of timing of when the 65-day clock starts, when that time, so on, so forth. So I just want to pause here before I move on to the next change to see if there's any questions on any of the language pertaining to this, the new language about the 65-day time period under which planning boards have to make a decision. Okay, I'm not, oh! I'm not seeing any questions, so I'm going to keep going for the time being. Again, something comes to you later, we can bring that up again. All right, so the next change is one of the few changes that is not in, or was not from House Bill 1661. This is another change in Chapter 5, under Required Review, page V5, which was made due to a legislative change by the enactment of RSA 674:75. 674:75, that now makes any interstate natural gas transmission pipeline operator an abutter for the purposes of any development that occurs within 1,000 feet of the center point of the natural gas transmission line. RSA 674:75, for your purposes, or everybody's purposes, the planning board and zoning board members that might be on the call, also requires local land use boards in a municipality that is within 1,000 feet of the center point of a natural gas transmission pipeline to make national pipeline mapping system data, geospatial data, maintained by the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration, PHMSA, which is within the U.S. Department of Transportation, USDOT, relative to the location of pipelines available to developers. Because this data is already publicly available at the link shown on this slide, it's kind of highlighted in darker maroon blue, that'll take you to that. This data, there really isn't much for a local land use board to do here, other than say... Want to go ahead? Do we have a question?
Yeah, we have a question in the chat.
Please.
This can be confusing, and this is regarding written findings of fact. This can be confusing since there's not always the means of finding a fact in various cases. It is my understanding that ZBA members are quasi-judges, where judges render opinions rather than convey findings of fact. What exactly is expected of ZBAs? And after so much time without the statute, why is this now being implemented?
Sure. So Dawn, thank you very much for the question. We are going to get into written findings of fact in a minute for both planning boards and zoning boards. So we will, I'll come back to that question when we get to that section of the presentation. Thank you. But so just finishing up here on this edition of RSA 674:75. Like I said, the mapping data is available at this website. So even though it says that local land use boards have to make this available, data available to developers, it already is available. I guess I think to note here is that it already is available in the public domain. You just need to be able to be able to send folks to the link, which let me see if I can just pull it up and put it in the chat for folks that may not have that. If I can get to that. I don't have that at my fingertips. Sorry, I thought I did. Alvinas, if you can pull that out from the presentation, that would be great. All right. And then the other thing to note here is that a similar change was made into Appendix D under the checklists on page D3, adding the requirement to notify the pipeline operator if the project is within 1,000 feet of the pipeline. So next slide is about Chapter 5, about filing fees, page V7. This is another change that was from House Bill 1661. This change is relative to the publication of fees that the municipality charges, including land use board fees. So basically, now failure to publish such fees in a location accessible to the public during normal business hours, either at the city or town hall, or on the city or town website, will result in those fees being waived. We've added an explanatory box here to this page of this chapter, on Chapter 5, that advises that you should also create a separate document label, a notice of land use board fees, under RSA 673:16, Roman numeral 3, which will contain a complete listing of fees charged by the municipality. And I just want to note here, too, we didn't put it in this language. I think it might be in the earlier, in the joint memorandum, which I know there's a link to at the end of this presentation, that OPD and BEA co-authored with NHMA. The statute is very particular, that you only need to include fees that can reasonably be kind of assessed prior to, you know, calculated prior to an application. So if there's, obviously, there's some fees that are going to be based on, you know, length of road, length of new pipe, so on, so forth, that just aren't determinable at the time an applicant goes to put in an application. You don't need, you can certainly put a note to that kind of the calculation or the formula for how that'd be calculated. But obviously, it would be unreasonable to put, there just are some fees that cannot be calculated or known what exactly the number is going to be in advance. The drafters knew that. That's fine. It's just kind of any fees, set fees, application fees, so on, filing fees. Any fees that do have a fixed amount, you should definitely, you do definitely want to include on this notice of land use board fees. Any questions about land use board fees and that new requirement? Great. Okay, I'll keep going. But now we're going to get into the finding of fact. And Dawn, we're going to start with the planning board, but I'll try to also kind of address the zoning, try to get to the zoning board here, too, since we go through more of the meat of the finding of fact section in this part of the presentation. So the next set of slides, as I said, are about, refer to Section 73 of House Bill 1661, codified in RSA 676:3, Roman numeral 1. It requires that notices of decision issued by a local land use board to contain written findings of fact that support that decision. Specifically, RSA 676:3, Roman numeral 1, requires all local land use boards, which include planning boards, zoning boards of adjustment, historic district commissions, building inspectors, and building code boards of appeal, as well as agricultural commissions and housing commissions to provide specific written finds of fact to support an approval or disapproval. While meeting minutes can be used to write written findings of fact, they should not be relied upon solely for written findings of fact, as the level of detailed minutes may not always be sufficient alone to write findings of fact. And minutes are unlikely to always qualify fact versus fiction provided by the applicant, members of the public, and others. I want to note here that as these questions come up, has come up again and again, we've decided not to provide a sample findings of fact or template for writing findings of fact, as the findings of fact for each case are likely to vary greatly depending on the unique elements of each application, meaning there is no cookie cutter formula for determining findings of fact. In the end, it's up to the board to act in its quasi judicial capacity to weigh the merits of the project against potential concerns and determine what it seems fact, while also evaluating an application against the regulations which the project is trying to satisfy. Typically outlined in the zoning ordinance, site plan review regulations, or subdivision regulations for the purpose of the planning board. For the purposes of zoning board, this, for any variance example, this would be weighing the findings of fact against the five variance criteria, for example. While not appropriate for all applications, but the facts about a project are truly in question. This is really more for planning boards. Say, for example, traffic impact, especially for large and controversial projects, which are beyond the technical knowledge base of the board to evaluate. A board is encouraged to seek third-party review at the expense of the applicant. The big takeaway here is failure of the board to make specific findings of fact supporting a disapproval shall be grounds for automatic reversal and remand by Superior Court upon appeal in accordance with time periods set forth in RSA 677:5 or 677:15, unless the court determines that there are other factors warranting the disapproval. Let's see. I'm going to stop there for a second and go back and look at the check. So going back to Dawn's question regarding written findings of fact, and this is real specific to ZBAs. Again, you are correct. Yep, that ZBA members are quasi-judges, where judges renders opinion rather than convey facts. That is correct. However, like in a judge, there'd always, like in a litigation, there's usually some establishment of the facts, summary of findings, upon which the judgment is made, and an agreement by parties on what those facts are. And so that is kind of what is a similar requirement here is, yes, you're not, it isn't so much of this requirement that you are conveying facts, but you are establishing what facts or what decision points you are making, you are rendering your opinion, your decision. Those, that decision, whether you're, if you're a ZBA, whether you're going to grant that variance, where you're going to grant that equitable waiver, whether you're going to grant that special exception needs to be rooted in some findings of fact. Some fact that you can go back to. Does it meet the regulation? Does it meet the criteria, the five, different five variance criteria on, you know, economic feasibility, or that there's a hardship, so on, so forth. It's really just spelling out that they have met, and it can be as simple as just spelling out that you have met, they have met or not meant that, met that variance criteria. Those, that can be the finding of fact. If there's any other information that could go in there, too. And then the actual vote on the variance, for example, that would be your opinion decision, would then, those findings of fact would go into that decision in support of or in denial of that variance, for example, for a ZBA. Hopefully, that's helpful, Dawn. And then, Dawn, your other kind of second part, which I think Stephanie said, after so much time without the statute, why is this now being implemented? This is being implemented, as Stephanie said, as a result. This is a provision of House Bill 1661. This is really to make sure that, yes, ZBA and planning boards to some degree as well are quasi judicial bodies, but your decision still needs to be rooted in some fact. Some fact, either adherence with the regulation, or in a case with NILE, not adhering to the regulation. A decision cannot be rooted purely in an opinion of a board, several board members. It needs to be rooted in some facts, some, whatever the regulation is. Hopefully, that helps. That may lead to more questions. We have a number of more slides on finding of fact. Want to see if there's more.
There are more questions, Noah. There's one from Donna. Should you only have findings of fact for the disapproval, or would you need them for an approval as well?
Thank you.
And then another one from Kathy. Should the finding of fact be included in the decision of, in the notice of decision, or can it be on a separate form?
Great. So yes, you need, this section's a little confusing because we're just, I think this may just be talking about denials. But yes, you do need findings of fact for both approvals and disapprovals. We're going to get into more meat of this in a minute, and we'll talk about how to incorporate that into the notice of decision as well. That's a later slide as well. I just want to go back to, I think there was an earlier question from Andrew Bodnarik about the fees. What about fees for special studies? I think you're speaking to studies, you know, third-party review, peer-reviewed studies. Just not, just something that is purely not going to be known at the time of application. From my standpoint and kind of being involved in kind of how this was drafted, like I said, that was understood by the drafters. I would say the legislative intent, again, is what is known at the time of application. You're not going to know that there is a traffic impact that might require a traffic study at the time of application. Therefore, and again, the magnitude of the project may dictate or may likely to have an impact on how comprehensive a traffic study might be required. So that is not something that you would need to note under that notice of land use board fees. Again, might not, not a bad idea to say, you know, under notice of land use board fees, here are other fees that we're not able, that, you know, we're not able to put an amount to right now, but that could come up, third-party review being one of them. Okay, so I'm going to keep going. And then we'll come back to some of these questions, because I think some of them end up being addressed. So in general, the board should be clear with identifying how the application meets or doesn't meet the regulations and check requirements when determining the findings of fact. Findings of fact should not replace conditions of approval. They are in addition to conditions of approval. For denials, in addition to consulting with town council, the planning board, and this goes for the zoning board as well, should con- should consider and identify what are the things about the application that are preventing the board from saying yes if it's a denial. These things should be anchored in the standards of the regulations, applications, and checklists. The findings of fact should be complete so that a reviewing court knows all your reasons for your decision, and the applicant has instructions if they want to try a second time. The board should also, and I think we just said this earlier, should always enlist the town council when possible to aid in the issuance and drafting of the findings of fact. I'm just looking at the questions. Thank you, Stephanie, for the additional, I think Stephanie's explanation is really helpful here. In addition, we are interpreting determining finding the fact, I mean, the board has to clarify how they reach their decision. Yes, that's kind of what we're kind of saying here again as well. This is kind of, what is the roadmap? What are the reasons that the board used to reach this decision? Okay, I'm going to keep moving again. Come back, I haven't forgotten about the earlier questions. So we've also added, now we're into section, I'm sorry, I don't think I referred to what section we heard earlier. So we started out, the first slide, um, on finding the fact was in chapter five, review of applications under step six, page V fifteen. The next slide I was just on was, um, addition, continuation of step six on page V fifteen of chapter five of the planning board handbook. And now I'm on to page, page V sixteen, for any of you that might be trying to follow along in the handbook, um, now on to page V sixteen, step six, again, still review of applications, chapter five of the planning board handbook. So again, here we've added language to the, both the approval and disapproval sections of the review of application chapter, with approvals, the degree to which local land use board should make detailed finds of fact, and supportive application may vary based on level of controversy associated with the application. So if you have a real straightforward application, you might, you still want to note how is the application adhering with the regulations, but can be a really simple matter of just listing out, they are in, um, they're in compliance with section A, section B, section one oh two point five in zoning, da-da-da-da-da. You just would just have to note out, kind of, here's your very simple, very clear approval. Regardless, but regardless of the level of controversy, the board should consult with the town council again to prepare complete and legally sound in fact. It probably sounds like we're saying this over and over and over again. To the degree possible, it's really important for a board to try to consult with town council. Realize it might not always be possible to the kind of short timeframe under which the board has to get the notice of decision out, but, um, when you can, we advise that. The other thing that we can't reiterate enough, findings of fact, yes, they are required for approvals, they do not replace conditions of approval, conditions of approval and findings of fact in support of an approval are two separate things. Conditions of approval being, what are the conditions an applicant has to make, um, has to, um, meet, um, in order to, um, to reach that approval. Findings of fact are, as Stephanie said it, what are the, Stephanie put it really well, so I'm just going to go back to her explanation. What are the points of how the board is clarifying how it's reached its decision? What are those findings? What are those facts? Hopefully that is, that's helpful. Uh, and then here's some more information on denials. Now we're again, still on page V sixteen, chapter five, review of applications, step six still. This is a similar change made earlier for denials, again, a local land use board should consider what are the things about the application that is preventing it from saying yes. These things should be anchored in the standards of the regulation described on the application does not meet the standard of the regulation, but may also include the exercise of independent judgment experience and knowledge of the area by the board. I think this gets a little bit to Dawn's question earlier about being a quasi judicial body. Yeah, there's some independent judgment here, um, and that's perfectly fine. But the independent judgment is not a substitute at the same time for still listing, um, for still rooting the decision in some relationship to, um, satisfying or not satisfying the regulations, the application and checklist requirements, what have you. Um, and then a few other notes here that we've noted here, uh, in the lower box. The finding of fact should be complete so that, one, a reviewing court knows all your reasons, and two, the applicant has instructions if they want to try a second time. The board should always enlist the town council, I'm not going to read it again, to aid in the issuance of the findings of fact. Okay. I think, okay, I'm sorry, now we're going to get to the notice, um, question on notices. So, which I think was somebody's earlier question, Kathy Ellis's earlier question to the defining fact being quoted in the decision or noted, or can it be on a separate form? So here, now we're up to appendix B, this is the public notices for subdivision, we have a similar change in the zoning board handbook for the notice of decision. This is, again, this is how we've incorporated language about notice, about how to address findings of fact in your notice. In this case, we're talking about notice of planning board decision under appendix B, public notices on subdivision in the planning board handbook. We've included the verbiage in appendix B, which provides templates, templates for notices of planning board decisions. Again, it's the same as we discussed earlier in the chapter, and has to do with including the findings of fact and a notice of decision, as well as specifying what happens if the board fails to act on the application within the sixty-five day time period. I guess to be crystal clear, um, the part of statute that references the findings of fact is in RSA, um, what, uh, I'm going to get the ID on the RSA on my fingertips, I want to say it's six seventy-six. Or, um, it's in the RSA about decisions. So yes, Kathy, to answer your question, the findings of fact should go in the notice of decision, not in a separate form. They can be noted elsewhere, but they definitely need to be in the notice of, in the notice of decision. Um, all right, more questions. Val Shelton, if the application has to meet all the regulations prior to being accepted, what would be an example of a finding of fact showing something that does not meet the regulation? Stephanie, don't mean to put you on the spot here, can you think of any good example?
You put me on the spot.
I told you, I, I, I warned you.
So let's, the question is, if the application has to, has to meet all the regulations prior to being accepted, what would an example of findings of fact? So if an application, if you're using your checklist as a completeness issue, right? So you can, the application, they submitted all their, you know, their, their forms, their applications, their wetland scientists, surveyors. So if you have a complete application, uh, but there may be something in the material that doesn't, you know, meet zoning, there's that fine line, or whether or not, uh, the board doesn't think based on their own interpretations, based on their own regulations. So if, if there is a question of that, of whether or not, yes, this application meets all of our basic standards of the checklist, but there is still some questions of whether or not the board would approve the application, that it was something that you should probably review with your town attorney to do that. So hopefully I'm answering, let me just see. Something of finding effect does not meet the regulations. If they didn't, you know, if they didn't, if they didn't meet the regulations and they haven't submitted a waiver, that could be another issue where their findings of fact are based on, we're not, you know, approving this application because they did not submit a waiver for it. Uh, that way you have given the applicant their direction, like you need to submit a waiver or submit the required material and, and resubmit the application. So hopefully that, I cleared that up. If not, be glad to chat, uh, after the, after the webinar.
Um, okay, Andrew, this is a variance question, so I'm going to hold on that, um, until we get to the ZBA section, if that's okay. Um, just in the interest of time and moving along. So, so similar changes were made to appendix C, suggested rules of procedure, specifically amending the process of review by noting the board has sixty-five days to approve the application unless an extension has been granted or a determination has been made that development has, is, is a DRI and adding requirement, again, to include written finds of fact into the board's decision, thus replacing the language requiring the board to provide the applicant with written reasons for disapproval. Again, we're just spelling it out, what we talked about, sixty-five day clock, finding the fact, how you should incorporate them into your planning board's rules of procedure. Um, last but not least, we've amended the flow chart in appendix F, which has to do with procedure for application review on page F two, which describes the procedure for application review by adding a note for including the findings of fact into the board's decisions. The next change is not due to any legislative changes. It's more of a little housekeeping cleanup that we found, has to do with waiver requested approvals. While it's optional for waiver provisions to be included in subdivision recommend, subdivision regulations, it's recommended that boards, boards allow for waivers from subdivision regulations. Also, it is good practice to specify waiver requests are to be submitted in writing and clearly identify the section of the application regulations and/or checklist item in which relief is sought. Okay, so back to a few more legislative changes before, or one more legislative change before moving to the zoning board book. The next change relates to the ability of Superior Court under RSA six seventy-seven colon twenty to require a bond from the appealing party whenever an appeal is filed and allows the court to award attorney fees and costs to prevailing party. However, attorney's fees and costs are not allowed against a party appealing a land use board decision or the local land use board unless the person or body acted with gross negligence and bad faith or with malice in either filing the appeal or making the decision. Not seeing any questions there, so I'm going to move now to the zoning board, since I know we did have several more questions there. So the OPD zoning board handbook, um, is organized into four chapters, one, organization, two, the powers and duties of the zoning board of adjustment, three, procedures, and four, appeal from a board's decision. There are also four appendices, which include suggestive rules of procedure, similar to suggested rules of procedure for the planning, in the planning board handbook, instructions to applicants appealing to the ZBA, suggested forms and templates, and a thorough description of the simplex v Newington court decision and how a board should take that into account. Like the planning board handbook, the ZBA handbook is also available for downloaded, downloading on our website, either as a whole book or by chapter, and the link will be provided at the end of this presentation. Alvin, can you now please put the ZBA, um, your link to the ZBA handbook page in the chat, please? So some of this is going to be a repetition, um, from the planning board handbook, and I'll try not to go into so much detail unless there's kind of very specific questions. As previously mentioned, the first change in the ZBA book is reference to a new standalone publication starting this year, which contains all the planning and zoning case law titled federal and state planning and zoning case law for New Hampshire local officials, which was formerly located in appendix D of the zoning board of adjustment handbook, and will be updated annually. The link to this new publication is also included on this here, and this is on the preface page three of the zoning board handbook. And then there's a couple of court decisions of note. Historically, we have included description of some court decisions in the, throughout the ZBA handbook. We have not done so in the planning board handbook. The reason that we decided to take out appendix D and make it standalone is because, um, the court decisions included court decisions about planning board and zoning board cases. We want to make sure the planning board members also have access to those case decisions, those, those case, that case law and those court decisions, um, as well as zoning board members. But so here, uh, we're looking at a change in chapter two, special, special exception sections, Roman numeral two, page eight, um, there's, we've added, um, discussion of the avenue development versus town of Swansea, case number twenty twenty-one hyphen zero zero one fifteen, which was a twenty twenty-two case, decision by New Hampshire Supreme Court in which the, uh, court ruled that, that special exception provisions that permit additional uses in certain zoning districts and affect declares such special exception uses to be essentially desirable subject to a determination that the proposed location must be considered in light of special restrictions or conditions tailored to fit the unique problems which the use may present. Well, special exceptions, however, may also in some places or in some respects at the same time might be incompatible with the uses permitted as a, as a right in a particular district. And so the court is basically saying here, you know, there may be the need for some kind of balancing test here between saying that you've basically, by saying a special exception, you're basically saying you favor this use, but also noting at the same time, this use is not always going to be compatible, um, with other uses that might be allowed as a right in the district. And we, um, like any, any case decision, um, link to the full decision and, um, advise you to go read. That's just a really very little synopsis or summary of what the board think about, of kind of incorporating it into, into how ZBA makes decisions about special exceptions, but we encourage you to read the full decision. Full decision is linked here, and also I believe it's linked here, and it's also linked in the separate, um, case law document that Alvin will discuss in a little bit more detail and provide a link to in a minute. The next stage here is a housekeeping change leading obsolete reference under equitable waiver of dimensional requirements to an old article which is no longer available. Next change is another court decision on, uh, chapter three, application section under previous applications on page, uh, page, or Roman numeral page three hyphen three, which has to do with the New Hampshire Supreme Court reiterating in Transformations, Inc. versus town of Amherst, case number twenty twenty-one hyphen oh two fourteen, twenty twenty-two, that when a denial identifies a lack of information, or when a board denies an application, I'm sorry, um, and the denial is based on a lack of information as a deficiency in the initial application, the court has held that every application proposing a project substantially identical to the prior proposed project is materially different under Fisher, under, under the Fisher v Dover court decision. If the new application provides that information that was missing from the prior application that led to the denial. So again, Fisher v Dover says you can't have two bites at the apple. This decision is saying, yes, but a denial was specifically because the applicant failed to, uh, submit a piece of information that would allow the board to render, review that application and render a decision. They can still come before the board with the same application, as long as they've provided that missing information from the prior application. Again, decision is linked, should be linked here in the zoning board handbook, and it's also linked in, in the, uh, separate federal and state, uh, planning and zoning board case law document that Alvin will talk about in a minute. The next change is relative to the publication of fees that the municipality charges, including land use board fees. This is the same change that we discussed earlier. For planning boards, where failure to post such fees will mean waiving them, we've also add an explanatory box to the zoning book explaining this change. Okay, and then next, now we're at the chapter three, back to the findings of fact section, and how finding the fact is explained in the ZBA handbook. So again, require this legislative change, and I was wrong, I'm sorry, before. Statutory reference is RSA six seventy-six colon three, Roman numeral one, is what addresses, is where you'll find, um, discussion of findings of fact under the, was this the chapter on issuance of decisions? So specifically, um, this change again requires that notice of decision issued by the board contain written findings of fact that support the decision. And we, again, like I said, we went over those changes in the planning board books, I'm not going to go over the same thing again in detail. I know there's specifics, a couple of specific questions about how to incorporate findings of facts, shall address in a second. Um, I do just want to hit here, Peter Coffin is acting to elected ZBAs that their own fees. Stephanie, I'm going to throw this one to you, I do not know on the top of my head.
Um, just for clarity, uh, normally it's the governing board, governing bodies of municipalities, whatever, set fees, so, you know, planning boards and zoning boards can adopt the fees as part of their regulations, but, um, it's the governing body that approves and sets the fees.
Great. Um, so there's a couple of questions about variance, I'm going to go through, I think there's two or three more slides about finding the fact, and then I will, we'll get to those variance questions. So now we're on to chapter three, findings of fact, uh, in the ZBA handbook, page three hyphen fourteen, um, and here, sorry, that was the first slide, the next slide, which I just said, um, is, we've already explained, now is still on page fourteen of the zoning board handbook, as we've already, as I said, we've already explained the planning board slides. A local land use board, zoning board is required to state the reasons, findings of fact when approving or denying the application. In general, the board should be clear when identify, with identifying how the application meets or doesn't meet their regulations and check their requirements when determining the finding. or doesn't meet their regulations and check their requirements when determining the findings of fact. And again, finding the fact shouldn't replace conditions of approval. It's going to be less of an issue for a zoning board presumably could, but it could still come into play. And then here are more now we're into the findings of fact. And the decision chapter, the ZBA chapter three decision page, page three hyphen twenty one. More changes requiring written finding the fact to be included in decision. As I said, we've discussed those in detail earlier on in the planning board handbook section. And these again, we've just mirrored those same changes in the zoning board handbook. And then here now I'm on to page twenty two of the chapter three. The decision section decision chapter of the ZBA handbook. Again, just spelling out that are describing the description of what should be considered when describing findings of fact again. Dealing with the level of controversy. That, you know, these things should be anchored in the standards of regulation described by the application does not meet the standards. But also include the exercise of independent judgment experience and knowledge of the area of the board, as I said. And also that the finding the fact should be complete. So is that a reviewing court knows all of your reasons and the applicant has instructions if it wants to try a second time. And Tara said, a good example for finding the factory non compliance would be example, the proposed road is a fifteen hundred foot dead end and the zoning ordinance section section X limits the length of dead end roads to a thousand feet. Thank you, Tara. And the last change that has to do with findings of fact in the ZBA book is in the appendix C suggestion forms, page C eleven. Which sets out the kind of what you include in your notice of decision. We've added a little section. Just kind of about where you could put findings of fact in the notice of decision. So before we go to the next topic, I wanted to make sure that we've addressed all the variance questions. Andrew Bodner, I think you had a question earlier about what about missing proof of a variance? So I think, Andrew, correct me if what you're saying is are you suggesting somebody had gotten a prior variance? And they don't have proof of that? Or are you talking about request for an after the fact variance here? Can you clarify that in the chat, please? And while he does that, let's see if there's anything else.
I think that was the only one that we didn't answer Noah.
Okay. Stephanie asked the same question. Could you clarify what you mean by missing proof of variance? So yeah, so so Andrew, if you can do that, that would be great. And we'll come back to that before the end of the presentation. Any other questions on findings of fact or we move on? I do want to know one thing that we just happened to get an inquiry on the other day, and I realize we are approaching one. So try to wrap up in the next, we might run over by a few minutes. We got a question on voting. Statute does not address how a board should vote or even if a need or does need to vote on findings of fact. As I simply said, it just addresses that that it needs to be ended that the written decision needs to include findings of fact. Some boards I know have been taking separate votes on the findings prior to taking the vote on the application. Certainly allowed to do that. In some ways, I think that's could be preferable, even if redundant to make sure all the board is really in agreement on what all the findings of fact, findings of facts are. That it's basing its decision on certainly not a requirement, though. The finding the fact could just be part of the actual vote on the application or to vote on the appeal. Board can choose how it wants to do it. It just needs to stick with that, especially for ZBA. Again, I'm not going to have a statute in front of me, but it just needs to stick with that same voting. It can't just be consistent if you're either going to do one vote, one motion or two motions. But you just need to be consistent for all applications. Other than that, there's no requirement on how you needing to vote on findings of fact or separate motions or not. Andrew, you've clarified that you're talking about the new requirement to submit a variance with the application. Stephanie? Do you care to opine on this?
The question is what? A new requirement to submit a variance with an application, meaning what a variance for a planning board application?
Andrew, do you want to come off?
Yeah, I guess I'm still a little confused for.
I'm going to go ahead and unmute you if you don't mind. To see if you can help and now unmute you. You should be able to unmute yourself now, Andrew, to try to help explain what you're getting at as Stephanie, I am still a little confused.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
There's a requirement in here for completeness of the application that if a variance is needed, it should be submitted with the application. I remember reading it in the changes.
So I think you're getting at, Andrew, it sounds like one of our kind of non legislative changes was about a board should only rule an application is complete if it's met all the regulations. Is that kind of what you're getting? Is that the part you're getting at?
That's the kind of, and I think it specifically mentioned waivers or waivers or variances.
Yes. So Tara, so Tara has mentioned. And Stephanie has just added that.
Chapter five, if you look at chapter five, V five, it says an application should not be accepted as complete by the planning board if it doesn't comply with local regulations unless a variance or waivers have been
Got it.
admitted and granted.
Got it. Understood. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So sorry, sorry about that. Yes, okay, so that was Val's question as well. And so I think your question then becomes. Do you need to submit? You need now to submit that as proof as well? So if you don't have proof. So I think kind of taking a step back, unpacking this is actually a bigger question is you're going to a board, going to the planning board to do something that's not allowed. You don't have proof of that variance. Does that now mean that the planning board can't rule that as complete? Is that kind of what we're getting at here?
That's where we're getting at because it sounds like to me if well, I we got had a conceptual consultation where the applicant indicated that a variance was needed. Does that now trigger the need for the variance to be issued before the application to the planning board can be deemed complete?
I think there's, I think there's a little bit of, you know, just some nuances when when you talk about that because and I don't have it in front of me and again, be glad to chat afterwards, give myself and or Noah a chance to look up the RSA. I believe there's RSAs that say that one board can't hold up another board for a decision. Okay, so the so somewhere along lines in the RSAs, they've said that the planning board can make an approval and have the approval contingent upon receiving a variance. So there is a slight difference between whether or not something doesn't meet the zoning ordinance in addition and they don't, you know, they haven't gotten a variance versus one board can't hold up another. Now, in old school way, when I was doing planning, town planning was that, you know, I would say you need your permission slip. You need that variance first and then come to the planning board. But like I said, I believe the RSAs can, you know, have changed over the past several years where one board can't not address an application just because they're missing a variance or because they don't have their site plan yet or vice versa. But it's that fine line between whether or not something they they don't have their, you know, it's in like Tara made the example of whether or not, you know, if the road length is either in the zoning ordinance or in the site plan or the subdivision regulations. You know, the ZBA wouldn't be involved in that. If they haven't submitted a waiver for that road length, then the board can say, no, we're not going to accept this application as complete. So there's, there's a few nuances, kind of like a tennis match that go back and forth. For clarity, again, will we always defer you to, you know, get a process down, get a procedure down by working with your town attorney to figure out the best ones to do that. And I hope that didn't make it, you know.
No, that's fine. That's fine. What I was thinking of is it possible to issue a notice of approval conditioned on the issuance of a variance because I think that's available.
Yeah, that is. That is kind of what I was saying is that there that is available in the law.
And this didn't change it. That's what I wanted to make sure that this didn't change that.
Correct. Yeah, this was more of a this was more of a best practice kind of suggestion that we said this was not a legislative change. Yes, and I'm sorry if we've confused matters more.
I just wanted to make sure that this didn't say to the planning boards, you have to have the variance in hand, the approval in hand before you can deem the application complete.
Sure, sure. And Audrey Audrey makes a really good point too that Audrey Klein makes very good point. Sometimes the planning board doesn't realize that there is a variance needed until they're in a hearing with the application that has already been approved as complete.
Correct.
That's that's where I was going to, yeah.
Right, and correct because sometimes your checklist, so what what makes an application complete to a board? Was do they have enough information in front of them mostly, right, to make a decision? So sometimes, again, those run, you know, zoning will intersect with what's the items are on a checklist. Sometimes they don't. So it kind of depends on how your board is operating versus the information that is needed completeness is based upon whether or not the board has the information submitted at the time of the application or a waiver request that can be discussed and granted or denied. So it sometimes zoning doesn't come into completeness and then that probably makes it a lot more confusing. But again, feel free to reach out to your town attorney, you know, as far as how do you handle these little nuances of that?
Thanks. And to I really appreciate the discussion because that's where I was headed anyway. When in doubt, talk to your legal counsel.
Exactly. When in doubt, punt and talk to your attorney. And yet, as if you haven't noticed, you know, the the passage of sixteen sixty one has made it you know, has made it pretty difficult for for us to try and decipher what their intentions were and to and for everybody else, for you guys involved. So we're doing our best to try to figure out the best way to handle these findings of fact, to handle these types of things. And again, we'll punt and say to make sure that you're you're checking in with your town attorney about how to handle those things.
Appreciate all the help. Thanks.
You're welcome. Quickly, just to answer George. So the needed variance can be a condition of approval technically by the RSAs, which again, I don't have in front of me. Yes, they can. But then, you know, that kind of gets into a back and forth, which is why I kind of always went old school. And that you get your permission slip first because if you go through the site plan approval process or the subdivision approval process and the planning board has conditioned the approval of that application based on getting a variance and then the applicant doesn't get the variance. Then they, you know, everybody's kind of wasted a lot of time and money because then the site plan application is approval is null and void until that applicant can get the variance. So again, you're kind of going back and forth. And it's, and it's again, it's can be burdensome on the applicant and on the on the boards, on staff. Having a lot of these reviews that could be unnecessary if you get your permission slip first, you get your special exception or you get your variance first. And then that way the planning board doesn't have to deal with zoning issues within their approval.
So there's a so we got some more questions. I want to get right through the rest of material since I know some people need to get off. And then I'll come back to a few of these more questions since we're already at one oh four. So hopefully that's okay with folks. So so the other kind of substantive change from House Bill sixteen sixty one specific to ZBAs. Now that there is now for the first time, ZBAs in addition to planning boards have a clock, have a ninety day clock. The planning board sixty five days, zoning boards ninety days, partially because zoning boards don't meet typically as frequently because they don't aren't required by statute to meet. So ZBAs now have ninety day ninety days to approve or deny the application. The top top text box on this slide, we're in chapter three decision section, page three dash teny twenty. The zoning board has the language from RSA six seventy four colon thirty three paragraph. VIII that stipulates that upon receipt of an application, a ZBA has ninety days to begin formal consideration and approve or disapprove of an application unless the applicant applicant agrees to an extension. If the ZBA determines that it lacks the sufficient information to make a final decision on an application and the applicant does not consent to an extension, the board may deny the application without prejudice, allowing the applicant to reapply for the same relief. Again, as I think Stephanie alluded to earlier, there's no completeness of application for ZBAs. There's no kind of parallel statute, which is another reason why that clock is ninety days versus sixty five days and why there's some of this additional language about when the ZBA if it doesn't have to complete, if it's lacking sufficient application information to make a decision. That it and doesn't consent to an extension that it can deny the application without prejudice. Because there is no other RSA for which the ZBA to deem an application complete before it begins review. Hopefully that makes sense. Next slide is kind of, we've added this language about the ninety days to appendix eight, the decision section on page eight four. There's been a chain noting that the board now has ninety days to review the application and that it has to include findings of facts in its decisions as failure to do so again for a denial or disapproval shall constitute grounds for automatic reversal and remand by superior court on appeal unless the court determines that there are other factors warranting this disapproval. And this is of note, this is the first time the ZBA application approval is introduced. Appendix A was also amended to include the verbiage about the requirement to include specific grounds of facts in the ZBA notice of decision. Chat now, next slide, we're now into chapter four appeals from board decisions, page IV hyphen six. Appeal to appeal to superior court section, which deals with the superior courts ability to now require a bond from the appealing party whenever appeal is filed and to allow the court to award attorney fees and costs to a prevailing party. However, as we said previously, the attorney's fees and costs are not allowed against a party appealing a land use board decision, a local land use board unless that person or body acted with gross negligence and bad faith or with malice in either filing the appeal or making the decision. And then finally, I think this is the last substantive slide. These are just changes in appendix D and E that reflect the fact that we took out appendix D, which was made into a separate publication mentioned earlier containing the federal and state planning and zoning case law and renaming section E. Section D, which contains the background information on the simplex v Newington case. We got some back and forth here. Kyle says, I apologize, this was covered already, but can you speak more to stipulations, conditions from a ZBA on a special exception prior to an application going to the planning board or legal counsel? Our legal counsel said that neither land use board has authority to bind the other one to take any particular action on an application. Is there guidance on what stipulations ZBA can and cannot make? Are there are those mandatory or suggestions that the planning board can accept or ignore?
I was just answering Kyle, so I'll jump in Kyle and just say hopefully this answers your question, Kyle. If not, as please reach out to us after the webinar. But normally the ZBA, when they do their variances, when they do special exceptions, their hands are tied to those criteria. You know, does it meet public interest and and is it going to be an impact on, you know, public facilities, those kinds of things? That doesn't limit the ZBA from attaching conditions to those variances. And the planning board should be, you know, made aware of anything that they've approved, whether it's the applicant coming forward or it's it's town staff that is making the planning board aware that they got a variance to have a five hundred square foot sign that can be lit up twenty four hours a day. So the planning board should, you know, is make sure that they're aware of that. It's doesn't mean that the planning board can should ignore them. The applicant is still tied to those as part of the whole application approval. They can, you know, make it just listed as a condition of approval on planning board, you know. Applicants shall adhere to, you know, their their conditions of approval for the variance. But there's also, you know, that fine line between sometimes planning boards and zoning boards kind of crossover when they when applications particularly need a special exception and then a planning board approval. Special exception criteria are laid out pretty clearly and and what the ZBA should address. And and traffic and lighting and landscaping and those kinds of things are in in the planning board lane. So the ZBA should, you know, try, even though it's hard because they do, there's a lot of crossover and there's a lot of issues that can go back and forth that the ZBA needs to just kind of make sure they're sticking to the special exception criteria. You know, the one thing that kind of dances back and forth between a site plan approval and what the planning board would look at versus, you know, in special exceptions is the utilities, the utility portion of the special exception criteria. So just kind of make sure when I was doing in town planning, I always made sure. So just kind of make sure, when I was doing in town planning, I always made sure that the planning board was aware of the ZBA decision. It was included in their packet. They, they saw what, what they're approved for. Um, and it was the, up to the prerogative of the board of that time. It's not mandatory because that decision is still on record and it's still going to be attached to the site plan approval. But it is, you know, it is, maybe it's just a good practice that the planning board include that zoning board of decision, um, into their planning board notice of decision, especially if you're recording at the registry of deeds site plan approvals. That way that the, the ZBA decision carries through that, um, through the recording of the site plan approval or the notice of the condition, notice of decision for the site plan. So I hope that kind of cleared it up. And if not, as always, feel free to reach out.
Audrey put some helpful, uh, comment in the chat too, um, as well. And interestingly, I'm not going to read through all these comments as these look like comments mostly. Uh, Jay, you have a question, which I'm, we might have to go back to you. Could the sixty-five days run out while something is sent back to zoning? Stephanie? Sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Could the sixty-five day planning board clock run out if something has to be sent back to the ZBA?
I wouldn't know how to answer that. I would say punt to your town attorney unless there's an agreement between, you know, the board, um, and the applicant to waive that while they go back to the ZBA.
I'm sorry, Jay has clarified if a variance is missing. Essentially, I think he's asking, does a sixty-five day clock pause? If you're missing a variance, a planning board starts reviewing an application, it realizes, oh, this isn't, we can't actually rule on this because now midway through, we don't have a variance. Um, yeah, I would go to, I would agree with Stephanie. I would just defer to your town council on that one. Um.
Yeah, it would be, it would be best to kind of, you know, having these questions, speak with your town council. They're the ones who have to defend you in court if something happens. So, uh, make, make them aware of kind of these little procedural nuances that you, that you have and make sure that the board is sticking to that. You may want to put it in your rules of procedure. Uh, make sure that you're fair, treating everyone the same. Uh, but just to get some kind of policy procedure down for this as, as some of these, these new, um, you know, the new laws that have passed are kind of adding a little bit of confusion to what everybody's trying to, trying to do. So just be careful with that.
Great. Thank you. All right. I think we've caught up on all the questions. I'm going to turn it back now to Alvina.
Thanks, Noah. And I'm going to put the link to that new, um, publication in the chat again. Um, this one is the one that we mentioned before, New Hampshire, um, OPD federal and state planning and zoning case law for New Hampshire local officials. Um, it contains summaries of cases relevant to the New Hampshire planning boards and zoning boards of adjustment as compiled by New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development over time from various sources, many of which are cited throughout the text of this publication. Please remember that these are summaries only. For a complete copy of the case, please review the full decision and we have links in there for most of them. And each case includes a citation to a source and a hyperlink where available. Next slide, please, Noah. This is something that we've already conducted a webinar on last year. Um, OPD partnered with NHMA to provide training last summer on changes to planning and zoning laws in two thousand and twenty-two. That collaboration resulted in the production of a guidance document titled Changes to Planning and Zoning Laws in Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, A Guide for Municipalities. It contains guidance on a number of changes, including the enactment of, um, House Bill ten twenty-one and the House Bill sixteen sixty-one. While the procedural changes contained in House Bill sixteen sixty-one are reflected in the updated versions of the planning board and the zoning board handbooks reviewed today, the land of structures primarily used for religious purposes, preemption to local zoning codified in RSA six seventy-four colon seventy-six, like other state and federal preemptions for local zoning, aren't discussed in detail in the current edition of either handbook. A link to the guidance document can be found on the right side of the screen, right on the slide, and it will be clickable on the PDF version of the slides on the, uh, on our website. Next slide, please, Noah. Um, these are all the links. Again, they're all clickable. Uh, you can, um, find the publications, um, of all of the handbooks, uh, on, um, following these links. Next slide, please, Noah. Um, now we're getting to the tests that we mentioned earlier. OPD also has option tests based on the planning and zoning handbooks, which come in two options, with or without certificate. On the slide, you see the links to the tests created for the planning board. We've updated them, uh, according to the changes and we also try to swap out the questions every year. So, um, to keep it interesting. Um, there's no limited, so how many times you can take the test? And if you would like to receive a certificate of completion, you would need to provide your email. So you would take the, um, test, um, option with the certificate. Next slide, please, Noah. This is a slide for the zoning board, um, handbook test, same thing. You just need to provide your email if you'd like to have a certificate. And these are also updated every year to include the changes and to just kind of make it interesting for, um, people who already took the test, they can take it again just to test their knowledge. Next slide, please, Noah. So this is where we left some time for Q and A. I'm not sure if we're, um, have more questions, but if you do, please feel free to ask them now, um, or reach out to us after the webinar with any questions you have and we will try to answer them to the best of our ability. Next slide, Noah.
We'll just give it, I want to give it, I know we're, we are over. Does anybody else have any questions? They want to put it to chat at this time? Just give it like thirty seconds or a minute. All right. Well, we'll go to next slide, folks. Feel free to put it in while we get through the rest of the slides here.
And this is just the slide with our, um, contact information. If you have any questions after the webinar, um, Stephanie's is on, not on here, but we can always pass them on to Stephanie. Um, she's aware. Uh, we just got a question, Noah. In contentious hearings, can you set time limits on people giving statements? That's more of a procedural.
Absolutely. I think that's a, that's very important for public hearings. I think the chair can very eloquently say, um, you know, limit, you know, have rules and regulations for, for, for speaking. You can limit the time, um, and you can, chairs can also say, you know, limit the repetitive comments uh, as another way to be fair. Um, you can also please encourage people to submit forms in writing or submit comments in writing. But yes, absolutely, I empower every chair and every board in the state to absolutely, um, limit time and try to keep, try to keep the meetings, um, civil.
And I would add, if you put that in your, uh, rules of procedure, that's very enforceable too.
And there's a follow-up question there. Is there a good rule of thumb time limit?
Three minutes, three to six minutes?
I would, I would say two to three minutes. I mean, yeah, I wouldn't go much longer than that. You know, because again, you want to, they absolutely want to give everybody a chance to speak that wants to speak, but repetitive comments are, you know, are wasteful. Um, but, you know, someone can very easily get up and say, I agree with, with what so-and-so said, um, to have that. So they, they feel as though people want to, you know, feel as though they've been heard and that their concerns are going to be addressed. So taking that into consideration, encouraging people to participate in writing as well, it'll be part of the formal record. Um, but absolutely a two to three minute limit, time limit. Um, and, you know, the, the content, repetitive comments, um, should be limited.
Right. And, um, in response, I have another questionnaire from Dawn, who I think may have asked this earlier and I'm sorry I missed it. Any number of things could make, and I think you're referring to the ninety days for ZBA to render a decision. These might include lack of quorum, weather event, power outage, site visit, applicant non-compliance, incomplete application, applicant no show. So I would say, you know, in the case of lack of quorum, weather event, power of outage, things that are kind of beyond your control for whatever reason, to try to first talk to the applicant to see if they would, in accordance with the, with six seventy-six, um, thirty-four, um, agree to an extension, which is statute allows to, um.
I would, as long as, you know, kind of what we talk about, when we talk about findings of fact and we talk about, you know, having to continue an application or something, and if something moves forward to court. I think what courts look at is how a board reached their decision and they can only do that through the written records of meeting. They can only do that through minutes and decisions. So if there is a huge storm and, you know, it was dangerous conditions, as long as the board in, in some way is codifying that and have spoken to the applicant, then I think you're, then, you know, and just note, make sure that you're identifying that, hey, you know, the board has asked and the applicant agreed to waive this requirement. Just make sure, you know, documentation is key for completeness of these records if it does move forward to court. Um, if an applicant is a no show, um, check with your town attorney, but there also should be something else that you have in your rules of procedures that if an applicant is a no show, uh, the board may have the ability to deny the application if no one shows up for it. But check with your town attorney on that. And again, like Alvina said before, some of these things that can be addressed in your rules of procedure can help you out in these situations where you've codified what happens if bad weather, if there's an emergency and you don't have a quorum, those types of things. Codify that in your rules of procedure and work with your town attorney.
Right. And the second part of, um, Dawn's question, just lost a chat, was about incomplete information, um, or non-compliance, incomplete information. And so that, uh, the RSA does directly stipulate that if the board, if a ZBA lacks sufficient information to make a final decision on an application, um, and the applicant doesn't consent to that extension, the board can deny the application without prejudice, without prejudice. Again, and then the applicant could reapply with the new, with the application, with the missing information included. But there is that, that ability.
And to address, I don't know, my chat may be a little bit slow catching up, but I hope, um, Christine, think that if a planning board is up against the clock and did not have information or the applicant did not eat mustard, then the board should be able to deny the application without prejudice. Um, yeah, and again, review that in your, with your town attorney, review that in your rules of procedure. And, um, I, I think, and Noah may be able to clarify this, but I think the, the rewrite of the law does say that if the applicant, um, doesn't comply, then, then the board can deny. Uh, but, but again, work with your town attorney on that. And again, go into your rules of procedure about how would you, how the board, um, you know, deal with those types of situations. And for Carrie, does the agreement between the board and the applicant to extend the time limit need to recur to meeting? Ultimately, yes. Uh, again, being in public, being in transparency, having that decision in front of a butters, in front of the general public. But if there is one of those rare extenuating circumstances, bad weather or, or something like that, um, then it would need to be done in another way. But just to clarify, maybe at your next hearing, uh, the board can clarify that, you know, what had happened, uh, prior to that. But ultimately, it should be done in a meeting in the public. If not, then just codify it.
And you were, um, you were correct, Stephanie. Yes, that the six updated language for the sixty-five day planning board timeline, six seventy-six, call and four, minimum rule one, subsection C, does include that same language as, um, in the ZBA, um, about, um, if the applicant doesn't agree to do an extension and the board needs additional information to render its decision, it can deny the, the application, um, with prejudice.
And make sure you're using those findings of fact in your denial where it says the reason why we are denying this because the applicant failed to provide or, or whatever, you know, from the RSA. But that's, that's kind of the point that we're, we're trying to stick with, with the findings of fact is that how did the board reach that decision and why? And so you're denying this application because the applicant hasn't, you know, come forward with the material that they're looking for. And so those, that's most helpful to try and use those guidelines for findings of fact.
Somebody was asking, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. No, I was going to say the same thing you is. Go ahead.
Um, Peter was asking if the chat will be visible in the recording. Usually that does not happen. The recording is just the video, but we can make, um, chat as a separate PDF and just send it to everybody who participated. Uh, we will send the links to everything that we've posted in the chat in the follow-up email. Um, but I can also include a PDF of the chat if, um, someone's interested in the responses provided there.
So if there's, there's no further questions, we're going to, um, close today's webinar. Um, we want to thank everybody for attending. We'll send out a follow-up email with the YouTube link, the link to the slides, our YouTube link of the recording, link to the slides. And as Peter has requested, we'll do our best, um, to get the PDF of the chat. Uh, just a couple of upcoming notes. Our next webinar, which we're still finalizing the topic for, next plan webinar will be, uh, Thursday, March sixteenth at twelve PM. And our, um, OPD annual twenty-ninth, the annual spring planning and zoning conference will be on Saturday, April twenty-ninth from eight thirty, all day from about eight forty-five to three thirty PM. So please, please mark that on your calendar as well. We'll be sending out the agenda and registration for that conference, um, in the next month or so.
And Noah will add that that will be virtual this year as well. It won't be in person.
Virtual and free.
Yes.
All right. Have a great afternoon, everybody.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.